Like that policy, this is our regular meeting for the month of October. At this time, so welcome, welcome to us from your person. Those who are joining us by Zoom or whatever, the internet, we're glad to have you. So at this time, we'll take a moment of silence.
For this county, gracious, and for all the women, just thank you for staying with me. We will be thanking you for all your lessons. We will thank you most of all for your son, your God, for our sins. All which matters will go through this meeting over that you give us wisdom and discernment, that you help us to make the best decisions with the information that we have.
Attention, fully fledged.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on your own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Mr. Wood, will you read our proceedings?
Cherokee County Board of Education's mission is for every student to graduate from high school and to be globally competitive with words close second here in education and to serve for all.
Perfect, thank you. You've got the agenda in front of you. Are there any additions, corrections, or changes made to these? Hearing none, the agenda stands. You also have the regular meeting minutes from our September fourth meeting. Are there any additions or corrections that need to be made to those minutes? Alright, hearing none, those minutes stand as well. Okay, public comment? Do you have someone signed up? Let me read my statement real quick. The board will now open the floor to those who wish to make public comments. If there is a group present, please select one representative to speak for your group. If you have not completed the sign up sheet, please state your name and address of our records and keep your comments within minutes or less. This will be the only time that individuals from the floor will be allowed to speak unless a board member deals the floor to them. To protect the board's legal process as well as each individual's rights involving complaints or issues affecting school system employees, the board cannot hear a verbal complaint against an employee. In the event you are here to voice a complaint against a school system employee, I direct you to school board policy twenty-three ten, public participation at board meetings. So if it's time, let's hope we are early for our schools. Please hold on three minutes, I'm just trying to read my statement. Okay.
My name is Sierra Jaclyn Arby, senior teacher. I am here to talk about a seriously disgusting incident that occurred Tuesday night September thirtieth at the volleyball game between Murphy and Andrews Elementary High School. After Jamie Gay, my daughter, Sierra Jaclyn Arby, also known as CJ, was a line judge at the varsity game, she made a call during the game that was not welcomed by the opposing team. Right call or wrong call, that doesn't matter. These are kids. Yelling at a kid over a high school game is ridiculous. That's what the rules are for. Hearing displeasure over a call, it's not the problem here. CJ fearing a member of this school board booed her is an enormous disgrace. How do you react? You, Jaybird, are supposed to be above such behavior. You, Jaybird, are supposed to have better ethics, morals, and decorum, especially at a school sanction event. You, Jaybird, represent this community, these kids and these parents. You, Jaybird, are supposed to know better. These are your students. You booed students when you verbally abused my daughter. Being a fan is absolutely no excuse. You lost that privilege when you became elected public school official. Let's be clear here, Jaybird. At fourteen years of age, CJ is a strongly smarter, better person than you. She was taught respect for her elders, and that kindness equates intelligence. Because the kindest person in the room is always the smartest, always. CJ kept her emotions in check unlike you. Since your disgusting actions played out in public, you will now publicly apologize to CJ. Act like you're real, publicly elected school official that you're supposed to be, and apologize for rights and advantages of your official. Are you able to answer?
Thank you.
I'm going to respond to this. I thought about this since the other night, and absolutely, I didn't get caught up in the moment. I have the video, I showed it to numerous people. My pastor called me right after the game. He was standing right behind me. And he said, man, you did nothing wrong. Your dad first, school board member second. And I jumped up, it was a total of about five seconds, and I said, no, bad call. And I did boo, but it wasn't towards your daughter. But I want to say this to your daughter and you as well, because I am a father of two daughters. I publicly apologize to CJ and to you, not only as a school board member, but as a man and a father. But I will say this, we failed CJ in a way as a school board and as a school system, not so much just on me, but the fact that not one teenager in the game of football, baseball, softball, track, or basketball has to make a split second decision for anything in those games. So us as a conference, as a school board, we fail when we put a teenager out there. I wasn't yelling at your daughter. I was yelling at the time of what happened. I didn't even realize CJ was there. Me and Ryan have been friends forever. So if I would have known that was CJ, it wouldn't have mattered. It should have been an adult. And if it was an adult, if you watched the video, it's very benign, very benign on my point. I stood up, I went, no, and then I sat right back down. That doesn't excuse it, and I totally apologize to CJ and you, but we failed you by not having adults there. Because if that was an adult, if that was a parent, I think there should be an assistant coach from each team that calls those lines. Because if that would have been an adult, nothing would have been said, nothing during that action. But I do understand, and I totally publicly apologize to you as well as CJ. And I hope you can accept that.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Right, that leaves us to the next side of our agenda, which will be reports. So we'll start with Dr. Wood.
Okay, you have in your packet your personnel report. Also in your report, you have a school improvement plan for Andrews Elementary, Andrews High, Andrews Middle, and Martin Street Elementary Schools. I know you've had time to review those and everything, look over those. Also, we have two overnight field trips. Hiwasi Down High School, one is to like San Tila on October sixteenth and return on October eighteenth, and one to Washington DC, April eighteenth, and return on the twenty-second. And then the last thing on my report is you should have some data. And I just want to run through some things. We have gotten our data back from the state, everything. So if you'll go to the next slide, please, Mr. -- thank you, Mr. Riggins. So you have it in your packet or I have it over here on the board, either way, and that you want to look at it. Within the -- the slide that I'm on here is performance. Just to give you a little bit of information on how you come up with the performance, which on the next page that we get to will be some scores that we see. Eighty percent of those scores will be student achievement, and you can see curriculum rate, math rating, and science, nine through twelve math, English, biology, ACT marks key, and graduation rate. And twenty percent of the score is going to be growth, and you can look at the subjects there. I also gave you the breakdown of what determines an A, B, C, D, or F. So that will help you as we move forward. So if you'll go to the page two, top of the page there, this is our school performance based upon the information that I just gave you. So as you see on the left-hand side, if a school scores the -- greater than eighty-five percent, then they would get a nine. You can see B is seventy to eighty-four, and I will go through all of those. Along the right-hand side, it shows you the score that each one of our schools received. And the column right before under twenty-four, twenty-five, it shows you the performance that they have. The goldish color would be the D range, the yellow is the C range, and your B range is the green that you have there. If we look a little bit about growth, and I try to make it very simple on growth. When we talk about growth, if we think about going around a track. If you went and ran around a track one time, your growth would be a C growth. And what that means is, is that you have one year of growth. If you make two laps around, then it'd be one, two, and so on like that of growth. So if you look at the chart dealing with growth, you have three colors on this chart. You have exceeding is blue, you have met is green, and you have not met is red. So as you see, we have multiple schools that exceeded growth on this chart. We have Hiwasi Down Middle School, and we have Murphy Elementary, and we'll come back and talk a little bit more about that. But it shows you the growth. Now, zero is one year growth. Some of these might be in green, because you've got to keep in mind there's a little bit of standard deviation in there. So that you might see like a negative, a negative something, and it's still green. That's become some standard deviation. So just letting you know of that. And we do some comparisons with our surrounding counties. On the next page, on page four, the top. I just wanted to provide you with this information so that you can go back, take a little bit of time, you can look at it, and you can see how we compare with some of our counties around, around us on performance. And then just to point out just a few things, a celebration on page five, starting on page five. You'll notice that two Cherokee County schools exceeded growth, and I mentioned that, Hiwasi Down Middle School and Murphy Elementary School exceeded growth. So that means they, an easy way to put it, made more than a couple laps around the track. We have five schools there that identify with AB. So that's the Hiwasi Down High, Murphy High, Peachtree Elementary, Tri-County, and the Oaks Academy that we have. Just a few more celebrations. Murphy Elementary has exceeded growth for three years in a row. And you can go back, and again, you can look on the chart if you need to. Peachtree, Murphy High, and Tri-County have met growth for four years in a row. And then Andrews Elementary and Hiwasi Down Middle met or exceeded growth four years in a row. So those schools are to be complimented on what they have done. Just a few things, I gave you a chart about some graduation. And on that, you will see that our subgroups over the last, from twenty-one through twenty-five, have grown by seven point five points. And just from last, from twenty-four, twenty-two, it was one point nine points on growth. And then there's a chart, you can look at comparison of other LEAs in the state. And then just one other slide I have, I just wanted to point out, the most improvement growth. We have Ranger Elementary School that went from not met growth to meeting growth. We have Hiwasi Down Middle that grew two point, two point twenty-one growth index points, and Peachtree grew two point eighty-eight growth index points. And unless you have some questions, that concludes my report.
You heard Dr. Wood's report. Do you have a motion in a second to approve his report as presented? Motion by Mr. Coleman, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Coleman. Mr. Coleman, discussion.
No worries.
Mr. Coleman, discussion.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to make a couple of comments on this. I do appreciate this information, Dr. Wood, and congratulations to all the schools. I do know that this is not the full picture of how good our schools are, but it is the, what we have to work with, unfortunately, with the state. I would say that I would like to see at a later date all of the school improvement plans for the rest of the schools. And I'd also like to make a comment about, I do appreciate that we, we added some comparison for, compared to some of the other counties near us. And I don't, I'm not going to call out any individual counties, but if you look at that, we did very well. And so I voted for high school consolidation because I felt like it was the best way to offer more educational opportunities for our students. But that being said, the data shows that we, our county, makes the most with what we have, I'd say, as good or better than anybody in the state.
Yes.
Because this shows that the grass is not necessarily green. So at another county that's consolidated, sure, your student might have more opportunities to take different classes that we can't offer financially. And that is important. But just because a school is consolidated doesn't mean your kid's going to get a better math education, or they're going to get better social studies or whatever. No, the data shows that we have, our teachers and our administrators are just as good at it than anybody in the state. That's the way I feel. I mean, just look at what we're doing. Some of these other counties, I mean, they got three or four schools, and they can't do any better than that. Again, I shouldn't have said that, but I'm proud of what our school is ready to accomplish. So, thank you.
Other comments from board members?
Well, I'm going to tack on that, I appreciate it. It's not an easy job, it really is a job that everybody can do. It's not. We're greatly constrained with how we can do some things. And I wholly appreciate and recognize how hard our staff works. I don't care what position they hold in this county, whether they're a teacher, whether they're support, whether they're in the office, whether the, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. It takes every single person in this county working together to make our students successful. So I appreciate that, I appreciate you all, and just keep working, I want to keep supporting you no matter what.
Alright, go on, call that, please, Mr. Chapman.
Mr. Ellis, aye. Mr. Reddys, aye. Mr. Dennis, aye. Mr. Murphy, aye. Mr. Coleman, Mr. Coleman, aye. Mr. River.
Aye. Alright, next up, Ms. House, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I approve of the board several things in our one package. So we'll go through these one at a time, but we'll get through this quickly as possible. First thing, I want to bring your attention, is this round cover of your internal student funds. What this represents is a snapshot, if you will, of where your schools, each of them, have their own report, began last fiscal year, the funds they took in, the expenditures they have, along with their ending balances. This is a board report that we began a couple years ago, so this is your updated audited amount. I do want to bring your attention to a correction that we had to make on page seven, Hiwasi Down Middle School. We did have a software glitch in one of the beginning balances that was reported before last year that has been corrected. It is down there in Villa, also Hiwasi Down High School. You also have a software generated correction. They are very honored, sixty-six dollars, thirty dollars and eighty-five cents. But again, it does differ from the balances the board reported last year. This is for information, this is how many. The next document, if you will follow with me, would be this bound one, your approved budget. So we presented for you is our budget resolution back in June. We entered into a budget resolution so that way we could continue to meet our customary expenses. We are still without a state budget. I can't say that enough, this is not an indication at all that North Carolina has adopted a state budget. But what movements they have made is that there are some allotments that have been released that the state considers base allotments. Those are the staple allotments that are going to remain unchanged regardless of what their outcome to a comprehensive budget or not. There are some other allotments, they call them, get to the same allotments. These are their terminology, where they came and came from, I'm not sure. These allotments are the expansionary things that are program related, such as one being like the continued funding for the early college. So these allotments have now rolled out. We cannot bring before the board a budget resolution without our state public school fund. So we have to be working to get these allotments out to us as soon as possible. If you will turn with me to page four, I want to bring your attention to these budget resolution numbers. Right here on page four through page ten is a breakdown revenues and expenditures by purpose code of our adopted budget that is being presented before you. If you flip to page eleven, this is the summary of all the funds. This is the breakdown of each fund, the amount of the budget, the percent of the budget, as well as the total budget. We are presenting to the board to adopt our budget forty-eight million, two hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. Couple of things has changed in our budget presentation from last year to this year, notably in your capital outlay fund. Last year when we adopted the budget to the board, still included in capital outlay was the schools of innovation. Also, we had the Andrews River Game Project, which drove our capital outlay budget up. Now that we do not have those projects, this capital outlay budget does look diluted. Same would be true for the state public school fund. Until some of the other funding initiatives are passed by either the state budget or by a community bill, these are the only allocations that we can receive. The next would be in your federal programs. We are continuing to receive delay allotments. The federal shutdown probably is going to continue to delay those even further. What the one point five million dollar number represents here is the, and this is still on page eleven, this is still the, this represents our carryover balances, which are amounts that we carry over from June fifteenth through September thirtieth, which is the federal headline. Or it represents whatever current grant year allocations that we were able to get approved prior to the shutdown, before coming. So the rest of this document will, oh, well, still on page eleven. We did give you a summary by purpose code. How much of your budget is going to instructional services? Sixty-seven point sixty-six percent, system-wide, twenty-two point sixty-one. Down the object code, how much of your budget is salary benefits? Seventy-four percent of the budget. Does not leave us much wiggle room for things, the investment of this administration and this board's people. So just something to keep in mind whenever we are considering that. Currently, we have received a mini-vill allowance to increase our educator steps. That is the only approval we have received. None of our non-certified staff have received a allowable step or paid increase to them. Our educators have received their steps, and that should not be considered a raise to them. They may have moved up on their experience ladder, is what we call, but we're not considering their raise. One thing I shared with Dr. Woody that I think is important to let the board know is that we did fund this step, we did advance this step, rather. But currently, we receive no additional funding from the state to fund the amount, dollar changes that it could be, seventy dollars, eighty dollars, ninety dollars, whatever that step from one level to the next ended up equating for educators. We not received additional dollars for that. The only additional dollars we received from the state was for the increase in retirement, which our new retirement match rate is twenty-four point six seven percent, or our increase in health insurance, which is eighty-five hundred dollars per month. So very important information. Moving into page fourteen through the remainder of this, each of your funds has a detailed breakdown by purpose code and object code of how the budget is asked to be adopted in front of you. We have also included employment numbers, which you can find in the physician column, which is the POS column. You can see that there. That gives you physician totals that are funded out of each one of the funds presented to you today. The next item that I have for your approval would be the supplemental funds for teacher compensation, which is PRC oh seventy-one. PRC oh seventy-one is the state supplement to educators. After receiving what the state has calculated, our LEA max to be, which is three thousand seven hundred, we have calculated it based off of the number of employees that are eligible for this, and we anticipate distributing supplements in December and in May of three thousand one hundred and forty dollars to each of those employees. Again, this, this plan details which physicians are applicable, teachers, not a certified teacher, and certified instructional support personnel is how we have selected to use these funds. Unfortunately, this is a state initiative, we do not have any other opportunities to change that. The last item I'm going to ask you to do is, in the budget resolution, we are going to be asking the board to make an amendment upon its approval of that. Included in your packets, you should have an expansion of your summary of budget resolution in your local current expense fund. The county did give us the funding in an alternate manner to increase salary and benefits as approved by the state. In amendment number one, I have pre-calculated what those retirement and health insurance impacts are going to be. That amendment, forty thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars, is what goes before you, and those are the amounts that, again, correlate to retirement and to health insurance increases since that budget was presented to the county. I do want to draw your attention to a decrease, but it's not truly a decrease, in our Article forty-six usage of our local funds. We have made a transfer for restricted grant revenues in that line items. We are still being funded at the request level that we made to the county, but I have removed it out of the local current expense fund, and we will see it presented in the grants donation and reimbursement stuff. I did provide you the copy of your budget that was submitted to the county commissioners, and that way you would have it as well. There is no budget amendment in state and federal at this time. I am asking you to also approve amendment number one in the capital projects budget. This represents all of the projects that have been approved two days by this board up until our budget resolution. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. You heard Ms. House's report. You'll have a motion in a second to approve her report as presented. Okay, Mr. Matthews made a motion, second. Second by Mr. Coleman. Mr. Matthews, discussion. Mr. Matthews, discussion?
Yes, I asked, you had mentioned the step, the salary step.
Yes, sir.
So you said that's coming or?
We did. We paused it. We paused this, the step increases to the setting for payroll. And we retroired it to any of the different ones back to the office payroll, which is when that would take effect for educators. So that has been done.
Okay, let me ask you this. I've got this pulled up for, let's see, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. And I just want to make sure this is still accurate from fifteen years' experience on it through twenty-four years' experience, there's absolutely no increase in their pay.
Yes, sir. I think that's.
It's still accurate.
Yes, sir. I think it's very important to have those salary scales in mind. Any educator within year fifteen and year twenty-four, they may have moved up their ladder, and they did not see any additional dollars in their pay.
Yeah, and I just think it's important to the government to understand that too. Again, and anybody can look at this and Google North Carolina teacher salary schedule. You can see that, and that's true for across the boards, whether it's, you know, the national board certification, master's degree. Once you have, once you reach year fifteen, so basically from year fifteen until year twenty-four, you get no increase in your pay.
Unless the state changes the scale itself.
And I think that's still been that way for?
Two, well, this is the two years. They, if we have a state budget, they may do an increase to the scale of one and a half percent, two and a half percent. They adjust the ladder itself five percent. But for the past several years, that percentage has been actually deleted, even for our veterans, where our community-based teachers have gotten a lot of raises, four or five percent, but our veterans have gotten one and a ten and a half percent. But when the state publicizes, hey, we give educators an average increase of thirty percent, well, that's correct if you take this amount and this amount in the average of together. But the fact is, the need that several budget cycles have heavily weighted increasing the beginning cost for educators at the end is there's not, not yet.
Mr. Coleman, any discussion? Fellow board members?
I have something.
I have something, I have something, something, something.
I have been thinking about this since we made the decision to shift the payment for referees and officials to increase the coaching supplement, but that's becoming more and more difficult for high school programs to shoulder. And I know the motion's already been made, and this is just kind of like throwing it up spur of the moment, but I would like to throw out that we consider maybe at least amending this to include like maybe half of that, so that the schools still know that like, hey, you're gonna have to continue to come up with this somehow. But to help them try to get by, at least for this year, and I think next budget cycle we revisit it and maybe, maybe look at the budget and if we want to, hope to find something where we can shift around like we did last time to include half that, all that, whatever, to like revisit that. But I do think, I would like to put that out there and see what goes about that, that we potentially amend this. And I know we've already got a motion, so I don't know if we can add in the motion, if that's the plan for the board, or if we just consider it and come back to it. But I would, I would like for the board to consider that.
So Mr. Tatum, I believe that that is something that's already under consideration. Dr. Woody?
We are thinking, we are talking about that, but if you put it in the form of a motion that we've met with, this has multiple times we've met with, tried to set up native college school, we haven't been able to yet. But if you want to go ahead and whoever made the motion, if they would add that part with it, then the question would be, I think the first question would be, and that's what we've been waiting on, is where is the money going to come from? Is one thing that we tried to have some discussion. And so, why don't you make the motion in the form of that will be giving us the opportunity to go back and see if funding is available, and we will have them in that case, if it is.
As a reminder, that, that money was pulled from that to give more coaching supplement.
Yes, yes.
And so, you could, of course, you could flip that back over. I don't think you can flip it back over.
Well, that would be a prudent decision if you wanted to change your supplement scale back to what it was before, and that's what we would do, but I think it would be hard for some of those pages to take, to take a take test on a very, very short.
I was just saying that to say that the money would have to just come from somewhere else.
Please just.
And this is my proposal would be to use it for fund balance. If we identify other savings in the middle of that, I'd be glad to bring that back to the board.
And what would the, what would the amount be? I don't be paying like in the total like fifty or sixty thousand or something.
Yes, sir.
So half would be around thirty?
So this is our, where we do pay a hundred percent of the middle school athletic supplements. They just do not generate any revenue to support payments for that. At the high school level, their payments is fifty, I mean, it honestly just depends on the season they have, but fifty is sixty thousand dollars. If you're going to give them half of what we anticipate, so we were wanting to earmark in our budget to give them half of what their expense is, that number would not be known until the first of June, but we can go ahead and earmark in our budget thirty-five thousand dollars of potential use of fund balance, and we will only pay them half of what they turn in to us to be reimbursed.
How about if we identify where the current needs come from before we vote?
At this, at this time, it would be my recommendation that the board take it from fund balance. I don't yet know what impacts or available local funding, because it is such a lean local budget as is, what we could take from in order to give to. So we do have fund balance available, so if that would be a pleasure for the board, that would be my recommendation for now to use that.
Also keep in mind that from last year's amount, was it ten percent? There was an increase of ten percent that officials got to. So if it's sixty thousand, you know, just throwing out easy numbers, that means it's going to be sixty-six thousand this year. So just keep that in mind, so that everyone will point that out.
One of the big things of eating as an athletic official is we have shifted from many of those just being volunteer community members, so non-employees, if you will, to now they are employees, and if they're our employees and they're getting paid for services and care for county schools, we're paying matching pocket, matching retirement on those. And that traps up a lot of our, our costs in that line item.
Now, as a question, I don't necessarily have a problem with it coming from fund balance, but we could technically also ask the commissioners for that quarter cent, correct?
You could, you could ask the commissioners to London and County Federation. You can ask them to allow us to use additional Article forty-six. Both of those are, are an option to the board.
So if we kind of tabled that for tonight and voted on the motion that's on the floor with the anticipation that we're going to come back next month to make a vote on what we want to do about officials and where it's going to come from, would you be good with that?
For next month?
Okay, all right.
Could we somehow put in there, I mean, can we go ahead and ask the commissioners to fund either way? I mean, I think.
They don't have to fund balance.
Fund balance in the forty-six or the other. Before we, like, before we just said pull it up on balance, at least ask them if they say no, then our option would be that.
I'm fine with that.
Sure.
Okay, okay.
For the next board meeting, I'll bring that to the board of requests for use of Article forty-six, for what I anticipate half of that fee will set as ceiling.
Okay.
Amount, and then they'll only give us what we request.
Okay, sure. All right, so if we're good with that, then the original motion, I go back to was her report as presented. That's what we're going to be voting on, and with the anticipation that next month we'll be taking action on.
If I may just make a couple more comments, I would like to say that when we voted on that, and I do think it was the correct vote, I think our coaches were way over the people were raised. An unintended consequence for me was, you know, as everybody probably knows, I'm real big on increased opportunities. And so one unintended consequence I didn't think of was it's hard for me to say, hey, such and such school, I'd like for you to offer more sports, and now it's going to cost them more to provide more sports, so that becomes even harder. That's like I'm saying, given my kids and a possible task, and still saying like, I want you to do it. So, so that's part of my thing. And I'll also say back to Mr. Ellis's comments, I've had things come up to me about volleyball before, and I don't remember the context, but it was the same kind of deal where there was a call made by, by a student or a student athlete. And I agree with Mr. Ellis. I do think that that's an unfortunate position for us to put our students in where they're having to call things like that. So I don't know volleyball, I don't know anything about it, but all I do know is he does have a point. I don't see any other sport where we're asking students to make judgment calls mid-game, and I do think it's unfair. So I don't know, I don't know, as we discuss these things, that maybe that needs to be considered, is that we try to, we're going to increase the funding and revisit that, but we also try to avoid those situations in the future. I don't think that's a fair place to put our student athletes. It's, it's hard enough for our adult officials, but to ask a student to make a judgment call like that in a game, I just, I don't, I don't think that's fair to them. So that's all I got to say.
Additional comments? All right. Mr. Chapman will call vote, please.
Mr. Matthews, hi. Mr. Jacob?
Hi.
Mrs. Dennis?
Hi.
Mr. Murphy?
Mr. Coleman?
Mr. Ellis?
Hi.
Mrs. Braver?
Hi. All right, next item I'm going to, I'm going to talk a few, just a little bit about some things that happened since the last time we met. So we had Be Pro, Be Proud, and they brought their trailer out, their semi-trailer out to Andrews High School, Austin High School, Murphy High School, and offered for all the eighth grade students to participate in that. It was interactive, it was VR, it was opportunities that are available to our students in this state and of course across the nation, but really if they're not interested necessarily in a four-year track, so a lot of skill blamer, just a lot of different opportunities. So our high school CTE classes were, were able to go through every of the schools if they had, there were more time and less students, and all of the students got to get through it, and it just showed them, you know, sometimes you think you get locked in when yours to happen to do this, I'm going to do university track, and then you get down through it, and then you realize that's not necessarily for you. This was just something to show the other opportunities that are available to our students where you can still make a good living and not necessarily go on for twelve years after you've been post-secondary education. So I went through it, and I got to explore some different classes in it. I enjoyed it, and I learned some things. So Be Pro, Be Proud. You can go to their website, you can look and see what's available. It might be something that your student is interested in, and something they might be willing to work towards. I know we've got a couple of schools who've already started strong with family literacy night. I believe Murphy Elementary and Ranger School, right out of the gate, they've got some family literacy nights set down. I'm sure there will be more to come from other schools as schedules allow, and see where we can fit that in. So I was glad to see that with our fall sports seasons, they're all well underway. As been mentioned, so we've got golf, cross country, volleyball, soccer, football. Am I missing anything? If I am, I'm sorry, but we've got a lot of things that are underway right now. Happy to see our students competing in those events and see where, where they're coming out, and enjoy being able to watch them here and there. I know we've got homecoming coming up tomorrow night at Murphy High School, and then next week at Andrews High School, so I encourage you to come out, support your community, come to a day. Tri-County, currently college, I mean, we, I think we've talked about this maybe, maybe before last, I can't remember, so, but we have, I'm sorry, I apologize for repeating ourselves, but they have continued partnership with Parenting Gymnasium. So our students from Tri-County, about twenty, twenty-five students, Mr. Forester, will be traveling into February, beginning of March, somewhere in there. They will be going to Denmark again to meet those students in that partnership, visit that school, see what, see what school is like outside of the US, and then along the way, they will also be going to Paris. So not going to lie, a little jealous about that. Very much enjoyed my time on the trips, and I got to participate in the past with Mr. Forester when he had a global cultures class at Murphy High School. I got to see a lot of different places with students, and it's just, I appreciate being able to travel with students, it's a chore. I don't think it's a K clock and it's a vacation, because by no means is it a vacation. You are constantly, constantly, or at least I was constantly, just trying to keep up with students and making sure that everybody was safe and where they're supposed to be, but to see what the students see through their eyes, and some of these things, I just remember when we lived in Florence, Rome especially, and things that you have read about in history class all these years, and you're standing in the middle of the Colosseum. So to make that connection, greatly appreciate the time that Mr. Forester and his staff put into this, to be able to offer these types of trips to our students. I appreciate the other, the other trips that are going on with the other schools when they travel to Washington and, you know, like St. Luke, wherever it may be, just these opportunities that they're willing to offer our students and the task that, what an undertaking it is, so thank you for that. Speaking of high school students' involvement, so SGA, I have asked Dr. Woody over the next two months to have SGA from all of our high schools come and give us just a, just a brief kind of overview of what they're doing in their school. I think it's important for them to be involved in their own school and then to come and talk to us and tell us about it, so we know what they're doing in their schools. I think it gives an ownership in some things. And so we'll have two next month, and then we'll have two in the month of December, so I look forward to that. And then again, I'm going to touch on CTE internships, because we have thirty-seven CTE internships this semester. That is astounding. Thirty-seven opportunities for our students to meet up with community with different partners, to explore what they're going to do in post-secondary education. We could not do this if we did not have our partners. It ranges at, just everything, it runs the gamut of anything that you can imagine, we have a student somewhere in that field. So thank you to each and every one of those partners. I dare not try to begin to mention them, because I will forget somebody, and I don't want to do that. And that concludes my report. All right, moving right along to all business. You have several policies in front of us that were up for second reading. Mercy. Yeah, I'm not going to. You can see what they are there. There's probably fifteen or so. You've got the Friar, this is the second reading. So do I have a motion and a second to approve these policy amendments?
Absolutely.
Okay, move by Mr. Tatum, second. Second by Mr. Coleman. Mr. Tatum, any discussion?
No.
Mr. Coleman, discussion? Okay, fellow board members, discussion? All right, we're going to take a general vote on this, so if you approve of these policies, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by the same sign? Great, policies approved. All right, moving on down the line, new business? I don't have any. Great, even better. All right, announcement of the next board meeting. So our next coordinating will be Thursday, November the sixth, beginning at five-thirty here at Central Office. So with that being said, I'm going to ask for final comments. I'll start with you, Mr. Coleman.
Yeah, so if you have some, just give us all the same vein we were at with Greg and everything that's gone on the last couple of months. As we all know, we did send Kennedy Commissioners to set a little vote roughly almost five months ago now, and it was kind of pushed aside for a little while. Dr. Woody and myself have given the opportunity to go in front of Board Commissioners, let them just speak about it, and to be honest, went in there not asking for anything, just kind of wanted to make sure we all understood what got us to the place that we're in, so we don't make the same mistakes as we move along. However, at the end of their meetings. However, at the end of their meeting, they did put it to a vote to go ahead and allow us to do the RFQs, well, kind of elapsed, RFQs, construction documents, and start that process. At first, they approved an unending proposal, which was kind of crazy at the beginning, but then that was kind of changed. And so basically, as we bring in contractors and things that have these RFQs, one of the questions to be asked is, what's the estimated cost to get us to be able to present a cost to the county commissioners? And then when we get those numbers, then we go back to them, and they say they will approve those dollar amounts to, to continue with it. And again, it, it's, it's a huge step forward in the process, being that it is the initial second step in the process. I will say that step came a little late. We however did, when I say it came too late, is we were given permission to move forward without the time to move forward in time to, to fully do the grant. If you've never seen the grant, it's not too crazy complex, but there is a part that talks about destruction documents and where you're at on that, and it can be a little empty, or it can have some stuff in it. I do believe Dr. Woody, we put in there that we had made our, we approved to do RFQs and those things. And so we actually sent a completed grant proposal to the county commissioners Tuesday of last week. They still have till October 3rd, 12 o'clock, to sign that and send it back, that we could actually get that turned in to DPI. I don't think it's far-fetched to say that in your first grant proposal, you have a very low percentage of receiving that grant. So I do, it's still very beneficial that we were to do that, so that this 25, 26 fiscal year is not a dead period. And that, it would be good to have one year under our belt. Do not foresee that happening by October 3rd, 12 o'clock. But it was progress. It was, it was good that family did, we talked to them and had some feedback from them. And so that's kind of where, like I said, we've sent it here, I'll give the email where we sent it over to them, and so they hold it. And I can say wholeheartedly that as a board of education, I am still thoroughly proud that we sent seven votes to them, as well as I can say, speaking for all of us, 100% of every possibility of every option to get this done, we have done our part in that wholeheartedly. And so rest on that. And if it doesn't happen, this grant cycle, I think we are poised to be able to move forward next year. As well as in that meeting, they brought up town halls and things of that nature. I won't go into the whole thing with that again, but I do agree, for, I think we should put it on whatever agenda to go ahead and set those appointments, meeting times to do those in those areas as soon as we can. The way they were at, and I say we do that as a board, not as, I was asked to do that by them, because that is again, not their authority to do that. What we do, we, we are at a point now where I think we could do those and get the impact and the feedback from those. And with that, the understanding being, it is a time to get feedback, to get concerns, hopefully to get ideas that may help the process, but at no point in time is one of those town hall meetings going to decide the entirety of the project, but it will wait and be taken into consideration. So maybe, at any rate, or whatever, we can figure out times to do the, whichever works out, whatever. So that just kind of gets us caught where we're at. Discouraged, but hopefully discouraged a little bit, because we have progress.
Mr. Takeham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I would, I would have some comments on some of the things Mr. Coleman says, but if I start on that, I'll, I'll forget to look, I know that some had some, some things I wanted to mention. So I'll, I'll, I'll hold those comments till later. Till later, Dave, so that we're, I'm going to keep everybody here. I've had some parents contacting me, we get the phone calls, you see it on social media, the complaints about buses not running, those type of types of names, routes not running. I, I know this is a nationwide issue, but I think at some point, we, I think we as a board is going to have to look at our, our issue, that is, we have a real shortage of bus drivers, and we have a real difficult time running all the routes. I don't know if it's solvable, I, I don't know if anything, I don't know if there's a solvable for this, can be improved in some way. I don't know, I know that's a big topic, it's a, it's a problem that everybody's going through, but I think it's a problem for us, and probably every county's going through this, it continues to grow into more and more of a problem. So I think at some point, we need to revisit that and see if there's anything that we can do in terms of financial incentives. Maybe we already do some of those, but I just know that teaching is a very difficult profession, nobody does it for money. We talked about how underappreciated our teachers are by our state. Driving a bus, nothing against their students, but driving a bus in itself would be a very difficult job, because not only are you having to try to maintain order, but also driving a very big vehicle on roads where not everybody's paying attention, people's texting while they're driving, they're, they're passing school buses, parked school buses, they got a lot on their plate, and they don't get paid very much. I know that we probably have competitive rates, but I'm just saying it's a very big ask for not a lot of money, and hence, nobody wants to do it. So I would like to see us revisit that, at least in the discussion at some point. Another thing is, last month was Constitution Day, and I would love to see at some point, maybe next month, we have our packet for discussion, maybe some of the things that went on for Constitution Day at our schools. And I, I love the idea of our SGA students presenting. That would be the icing on the cake, if maybe some students from our schools came and presented to us and said, hey, here's some of the things that we covered, we did on Constitution Day at our schools. Just a couple more things that I'll do quietly. Along the lines of what Mr. Coleman was saying, the RFQs, I, I do think that we need to make sure that continues to move, maybe at some point we can get an update on where that stands, the RFQ process, and also the Murphy High School, properly across the road from Murphy High School. That's not as pressing, but we did vote to send that back to the commissioners, and I think they did approve it. So I think we should also keep that moving as well, but obviously the RFQ would be the, the more important issue.
I can respond.
Okay.
As far as the RFQ for the Protectorate, that has gone through the law year for three years.
Okay.
And then for the Murphy property, they said it would take at least two months, so probably within a few more weeks before they'll be able to do that process.
Okay. Did I miss?
The CDC group has reached out, they are working on a lot with the Limonair's, kind of their, their own, and JESI, their, their.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. That's great news. That's all.
Ms. Gaddis? The best issue, I want to know the number of best civil partner now, does he know that?
I think that's three or four, I could say that, because we, actually, we spent hours today trying to figure out some solutions.
How many students are impacted by that?
As far as the whole route, I don't know the actual numbers, but as far as, we did reach out to the principals, there's probably about 20, about 20 that feel that it struggles for parents to get to there, as it pours schools.
So these kids, that how are they coping when they can't, don't have any means of transportation to a distance? Are they counted absent?
With a transportation note.
So what does that mean?
Well, that means they won't have to go out before the truancy building, or does that?
But the teachers are still held accountable for those bus drivers, and they tend to be here for those students who are absent, that they have absolutely no control over. And research shows the number of days it's been at hands major affects their learning, So that really needs to be addressed. I don't know what you do that either. But one of the problems that I personally heard is the behavior of the students on the Yes, and that's not a ride, that's a privilege.
Well, I was going to say that, because I, I'm going to tie it to the end of some things.
So they need to keep it off the bus.
Yes.
If they can behave themselves.
And I'll agree with that. And I'm glad that that's been brought up, because I'm going to touch on that at the very end, because I worked in transportation for five years, and I rallied buses for this county, so I certainly have some feelings about it. So thank you, thank you. Anything else, Ms. Gaddis? Okay. Mr. Murphy?
All right.
Okay. Mr. Chapman, final comments?
Okay.
Great. Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, I would just say that as far as the bus, I've actually had my bus license before, and driven around, and it's no picnic, I can tell you that much.
It's not.
And I, I agree, I think that they're, they definitely deserve more money for what they do. And as far as discipline on a bus, it depends on the bus driver, you know, really, sometimes maybe bus drivers maybe need some, some training on, on how to discipline.
Kind of like classroom management.
Yeah, and I will tell this quick story years ago, and some of you probably know, I won't mention her name, but she was a principal in this district, and she did suspend students, which we can, you know, their behavior is, is not as it should be. And I remember her telling, that's, I think this particular school was maybe the first school that had cameras, and I think it was provided by the PTA. And I remember she suspended a student, and her father came in and was very irate, and was really upset with her, and he said, my son would never do that, and I, I expect you to allow him back on the bus. And she said, Mr. So and so, said, would you like to see the, the video? And he said, yes, I would. And so he, she took him to the conference room, put on the video, and he watched his son and his behavior, and he came out and apologized to the principal and said, my son will never behave like this again. I can tell you that much.
And, and our children have come a long way now.
Yeah, they've come a long way, yeah.
They've moved from the front end to back of the bus.
So, so I, and I would also say that I think as parents and as the public hear these concerns, and, and the board wants to solve the problem, but also, we ask for grace and patience in some of that, because, you know, if, if a bus doesn't run, it's not because a principal just arbitrarily said, let's just not run that bus today. There's a problem, and so it's sometimes something that we can't solve quickly, and it can't be solved quickly at the school level. So again, I would just ask for grace and patience from, from parents.
Agreed.
Do we have a policy on discipline on the bus?
Yes.
Yes. It's time to send the school get five of our handbooks.
So like the bus driver, which is.
Right, it's a referral to, to the principal, the principal handles the, the discipline of the student, or whatever action was taken on that bus. So, and there are consequences that range, you know, in just.
And again, that, I think that we do that as far as this on the bus, but also keeping in mind that as a bus driver, and again, I don't know how many here have ever driven a bus, I, I remember when I drove a route, I would come home, and of course, I was a principal at the time, and I felt the weight on my shoulders of just the stress of having those, you know, 35, 40, 50 kids on a bus. And, and again, what I would say is, the bus driver definitely can write those students up for misbehavior, but also keeping in mind that that bus driver is looking at a gazillion mirrors and counting kids and making sure they're safe, and, and sometimes that's difficult to do.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Woody?
Okay. That leaves me. So I might touch on a couple things. On transportation, I'll touch on that, yes, I took care of transportation for five years of the buses for this county. We got 57.
We only had 54. Anyhow, it's a tremendous responsibility, and it's a, it's a, it's hardly a people through the door. I think at one point in time that we had offered incentives of higher pay and potentially insurance too, if I'm not mistaken, to try to draw them in, but I think some of it right now is just actually trying to get them in, and a lot of that is due, again, back to the responsibility that you carry when you drive a bus. As Mr. Matthews stated, if you drove a bus, I have a bus license, I drove a bus, I drove a minibus, yo bus, push bus, doesn't matter. It's a tremendous responsibility. With that being said, it is a privilege, it is not a ride, we are not required to transport your children to school as much as that might anger some folks. It is a privilege, and as such, you need to behave on the bus. You need to teach your children to be respectful of, of bus rules, to remain in their seat, to do what the bus driver has asked them to do, and, and not to conduct themselves in such a manner as to cause any issues. That's not a hard thing to do. Pull it up y'all, breathe. If you breathe on your way home, if you need something to do, that will help you in a million different areas, but I'm not going down that rabbit trail right now. But it is, it's not something to be taken lightly, so I appreciate the folks that we do have that do step up, that do want to help out, that do want to drive a bus, and I appreciate that. I hate, I hate when I hear that we have to park a bus, I do. I had to park a bus at that time or two back in the day, and I hated it. I would try everything in my power to make sure that the kids were covered and get to where they need to be, but sometimes it just doesn't happen. So it's going to have to be a partnership with some different things, with some different, you know, we're, there's going to have to be some collaboration with that. But ultimately, what can help to maybe draw some more folks in is just that behavior on a bus. If you've ever been on a bus with 45 little darlings, you should ride a bus sometime. You really should. You'd be amazed at what you learn and what they'll do when they, when they know that you cannot keep your eyes on them constantly, because as has been mentioned, you're watching your mirrors, you're watching for other folks on the road. When you come to a railroad crossing, there's a very specific procedure, you have to report that, so just a million things that you've got to do. So thank you, those folks who drive a bus, whatever it be for, schools, boards, whatever. It's, it's a tremendous responsibility. Just to touch back on some things Mr. Coleman and some others have mentioned regarding this grant, yes, I'll agree. This board has done everything within its power to do what we can to try to get a grant through. It doesn't rest in our hands anymore, which has been pointed out to us several times. Some of the things that I've been somewhat frustrated about that have been presented that, that we sued the county commission, that we've gone up there begging for the money, highly inaccurate, does not need to be perpetuated, that's not what we've done. What we have done is worked to find what we think is the good solution to, to our issues with trying to educate our children and trying to build those facilities, and the fact, again, I'm going to say again for the fifth time in a row, the fact that this board can vote 7-0 on a plan to send to a county commission board speaks volumes. So I think we're very well invested in, in this plan, and we've considered all the options, opportunities, everything that we can do to try to, to, to get this through. It would be nice if we could have more of a working relationship. I realize some things have happened here of late, and that do give me hope that we can move forward in that. But we're so late in the season, as tomorrow is the deadline, for us to be able to apply for that grant, and what a missed opportunity if we're not able to do that. But it does not rest on this board, and it does not rest on the lack of work from this board. But, you know, again, I'm going to circle back to the beginning of the meeting when Mr. Takeham talked about the data, and then especially when we were compared with other counties around us, because we all know in this region, we get compared to every single county around us who have more opportunity and more money, but look what your teachers and your staff are doing with what we don't have. Be appreciative of that, recognize that fact of how hard they are working to, to improve academics for our students, to improve the quality of education that we're able to offer, and they're still here. They're still here, they're doing it day in and day out. I appreciate that. I greatly appreciate that. It is a daunting task, and sometimes when you are under constant scrutiny, it is hard to remain positive in that situation and move forward. Our people do it. Thank you from the top to the bottom, from the left to the right, I don't care what your part is in the school system. I appreciate every single thing you do. do for me because if we're lacking in one area and that wheel, guess what, that wheel, that power begins out of place and the wheel doesn't run the way it's supposed to. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm gonna say it again, thank you. I appreciate you and it's genuine and it's reflective. Now, do we have things we need to work on? Sure thing, every school district does, but I'm very happy with the way that we are trying to move forward and what we're trying to accomplish with that. So thank you. All right, now we're going to go to closed session, so I want you to read this little statement to make a motion to move to go to closed session. So pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 143, that's 318, 11 and 3, and 143, that's 318, 11C, I move that the Cherokee County Board of Education go into closed session for the following purposes. Under subsection A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential personnel information pursuant to General Statute 115C, 319, 321, and under subsection A3, to discuss matters protected by the attorney-client privilege. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tatum on the favor. I'm ready for closed session. You're not just a student, it's always me because I have.
Mr. Doherty, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Board members, can you hear the attorney?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I've left the meeting completely. It's you and those guys.
Great.
Thank you. Can you still hear with that noise? Can you still hear with that noise?
I can, yeah, I'm here just fine.
Okay.
Thank you for the microphone or whatever they're talking into, I'm just fine, I'm gonna do that.